Good evening and welcome to the July 9, 2019 organizational meeting of the Bethlehem Central Board of Education. This meeting was called to order at 6:00 and the Board entered into executive session to discuss individual personnel matter at that time. Can we stand for the Pledge of Legions, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we do introductions, please?
Dave Hurst.
Chris Meyer.
Meredith Moriarty.
Christine Beck.
Jody Monroe.
Brittany Barrett.
Holly Dellenbach.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Wendy Sampson.
Willow Bear.
Judy Keigho.
First item on the agenda is the appointment of officers for the district. Can I have a motion to -- it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following appointment of officers, action items 1 through 6.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries?
And at this time, one of those items was the swearing-in for the district clerk, which is myself, and Judy Keigho's going to provide me that.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of District Clerk.
Of District Clerk.
In situations.
All right, and then this time, we're going to do the oath of office for our two new board members, Jonathan Fishbein, who is re-elected for a three-year term, and Wendy Sampson, who is new for a new three-year term.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Board of Education members.
Of Board of Education members.
Officially.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Board of Education members.
Of Board of Education members.
And again, annually, we always swear in our superintendent of schools, Jody Monroe.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
The Superintendent of Schools.
Superintendent of Schools.
All right, at this time, I would like to request any nominations for the position of Board President for the 2019-2020 school year.
At this time, I would nominate Holly Dellenbach for Board President.
Second.
I can talk about Holly, or I can just be quiet.
Whatever you like, you have the mic.
Well, if there's no other nominations. I'll just say, I've worked with Holly for the last year, I've only been on the Board for a year, Holly has a great temperament and disposition for a position like a Board President. I think her involvement in the district is very diverse, which gives her really good perspective, and she served as VP for the last year, obviously with Mike, and had to step in every so often and did a great job, and I think she makes the most sense.
Do we have any other nominations for the Board President seat? All right, since there are no others, I'm going to ask Holly, do you accept the nomination for your name for the seat, and if you'd like to say anything?
I do accept it, and I'm honored by the nomination, and I'm excited to serve in this role next year. Thank you.
All right, and all in favor of Holly Dellenbach as President for the Board of Ed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? All right. Obviously, voting is complete, and you've been appointed as President for the Board of Education for the 2019-2020 school year. At this time, we will do your oath of office for this role.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Board of Education President.
Of Board of Education President.
Let me get up here.
At this point, I would like to request nominations for the position of Board Vice President for the 2019-2020 school year.
I'd like to nominate Christine Beck.
I'll second that.
I'd like to nominate Meredith Moriarty.
I'd second that. Would the -- well, first of all, do you accept the nominations?
Yes.
Would you each like to say anything?
Thank you, Chris, for the nomination. Appreciate that honor. I would like to serve as Vice President. I believe that the role of the Vice President is to support the President. I feel as though I would work well with Holly. We've worked on a lot of different things in the past, including the Policy Committee, and I believe I have a good relationship with the administration as well. I think it's important to spread the leadership positions around. A Vice President can gain a lot of experience that could help -- would help. I feel as though it's important for a lot of people within the Board to have leadership positions, so that we can have as many people who have experience as possible, and thank you for your nomination.
I would like to run for Vice President because I've had prior leadership experience on the Board as the President of the Board, and I feel that it's important to make sure that you have somebody that has longevity with the Board, and I have the longest tenure at this point, going into my sixth year, and I have a lot of history with different areas regarding academics, and I've been involved in hiring the Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent. I've also been involved in changing policies with regards to sick policies for students and making sure that the administration is making sure that they have the appropriate processes in place, and I think it would be beneficial to the new President because she's only been on the Board going into her third year and had been in the Vice President role for only a year. I think it would be beneficial for Holly as well. I think that we have a good working relationship, and we had discussed previously that you thought, when I was President, that I was an effective leader, and I was able to deliver appropriate speeches at graduation, at the high school ceremony, middle school, and retirement ceremonies, et cetera, and I would be honored to serve again in a leadership role as Vice President going into my sixth year, and that's my --
Nominations are closed. All in favor of Meredith Moriarty for the position of Board Vice President. All the --
We want to raise hands.
Yeah, we want to raise hands, so all in favor? And all in favor of Christine Beck. Voting results are complete, and Meredith has been appointed as Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2019-2020 school year.
Thank you.
So we need to administer your oath of office.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
The duties of the Office of Board of Education Vice President.
The duties of the Office of Board of Education Vice President. Thank you. You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, we need to select our Board of Education Committee Representatives. The first committee is our Audit Committee.
I'd like to remain on the Audit Committee.
Any other volunteers for the Audit Committee?
I'll remain on the Audit Committee.
Christine, I know you've served on it the past few years, do you --
I want to do the Policy and Facility Committee this year.
I'd be willing to do the Audit Committee if there's not somebody else who's looking Next, we have the BCTA Process Committee.
I'd like to be on that committee.
I'd volunteer for that committee as well.
And I do as well.
Next, we have the BCUEA Process Committee for our support staff.
I can do that committee.
All right, I'll volunteer for that one, too. Okay. We just need two, is that okay?
You can have up to three, but if you only want two, that's fine.
There was only two last year.
Yeah, why don't we stick with? Next is the Facilities Committee, and I know that that is going to be a heavy lift this coming year because of all the bond work that's being done, but --
I would like to stay on the committee.
And same here, I'd like to be on the Facilities.
You'd like to stay on it, too.
I'm also willing to serve on that committee.
We also have the Health Insurance Committee.
Did the committee meet at all last year?
When's the last time the committee's met?
Two years ago.
Yeah, it hasn't -- I don't think it's met since I've been on the Board.
It's a pretty easy committee to be on.
Sounds like a great committee to join.
Can I ask, do we still need a Health Insurance Committee?
Do we need a Health Insurance Committee with Kaczak? I mean, is it kind of obsolete at this point?
We could always create it later if the need arose, if that is your preference.
That probably makes sense. I don't think the committee's about in like four years.
I think it makes more sense than having a committee that doesn't meet.
Mm-hmm, I would not disagree.
And then next on the list is the Policy Committee, which --
I would like to --
Hold on a second. Which looks at the policies of the district and makes changes as needed. I've served on the committee the past couple of years and would be interested in continuing on it.
I'd like to be on the Policy Committee this year.
And I'd like to remain on it as well.
I would also like to serve on the Policy Committee.
So, I know we cannot have four people on a committee.
We can, it's a quorum.
No, I said we cannot.
Yeah, we can, it's a quorum, so there can only be three.
Yeah, that's why I said that we cannot have four people on the committee.
I'm sorry, it's hard, the fans are --
No, I know, I figured.
Can't hear.
So I think the best way to handle it, since there are four people that would like to serve on the committee, would be to have a vote on the people who would serve on the committee.
I'm not sure that you have to vote on committees. I think that would just be something that we would have to. It's not a votable item, it's something I think is just --
I'm processing, just give me a minute.
If you don't have a policy on it, I think you have to vote on it. Does that make sense?
If we're going by Roberts, it's something that the President can appoint or choose to have a vote. It's up to the President on this one.
I just wanted to say something before you determine, just, I think based on, you know, experience, like we've all had experience on the Policy Committee, you two have been on it for the past two years, I think to take that into consideration when you're determining who wants to be on it should be a factor, if you're going to be the one that determines that decision.
And that's, I think, because I would like to be on it, I think it would be a better course to have a vote.
The other practice that I've noticed on the Board, and this is something that was pointed out to Mike at the last organizational meeting, he wanted to be on a committee, and it was pointed out that the President usually waits and sees what's left. As I understand, you want to be on the committee, but often, if there are three other members because of everything else the President does, that often, the President steps back. So it's something you might want to consider, or not, but that's the way it's been handled at other Board meetings, both when I've been on the Board, organization, and when I've witnessed others going backwards.
I appreciate that, that thought. I do think in this case, and I think part of it is because I've been on it the past couple of years and feel like we have put so much work into the policies over the past couple of years, that I'd like to, I'd really like to see that continue, and would like to stay on it myself, but I don't think, because I do, I don't think appointing the position is the best course. I think having a vote on who should be on the Policy Committee would be the most equitable.
And I've also had a few years on the Policy Committee, so I did it for four years, I believe, three or four years, if we're looking at that.
So, if we're going to do a vote on it, then I think it probably makes sense to do it per person, unless you can think of a better logistical way.
So that we would each, we would each vote three times?
Or no?
So you have, you have four people that want it?
Listen, I'll just, I'll remove mine, it's fine, it can be the three of you, it's fine.
Okay.
It's fine.
I sort of feel the same way, Christine.
I mean, I would like to be on the Policy Committee, but if it's going to come down to a vote, I mean, it's never happened in the time that I've been on the Board that we can't agree on who's on a policy, so I don't want to start a new trend where we have to vote on policy committees, I think that's kind of silly, so.
If I may, Willow, I think the Policy Committee is one where having had experience is really important, and I know you want to get on it and get that experience, but I think having that experience as a, you know, going back on, I think is important, and I think we would have three very seasoned people on the committee, and I think that might be of a greater benefit to the Board, and that's not putting you down in any way, please don't take it that way, because I know how capable you are, but I was just, I was just thinking that having had the experience might be something we should consider.
So I appreciate that. What I would say is, I think that my experience in local and state government, creating statewide policy and legislation is a different set of skills that would bring to the Policy Committee, so I disagree. That being said, I'm happy to step down and allow Christine to serve on the Policy Committee.
It's fine. I would like to do it if she doesn't, it's fine, either way, I can agree either way, so that would be great.
Okay.
It's fine.
That's okay, Christine.
All right. So, Meredith, myself, and Christine. And then the last committee that we have is the School Start Time Committee.
I'd like to be on that.
I can be on that committee. I can do it.
Sorry, we were sidebarring. I know that, I don't want to speak for Wendy, I think she's very interested in it, I served on it this year, I was fine stepping down, but I was asking her whether she wanted to switch something else, because she's already stepped up a couple of times earlier, so that's why we were distracted for a minute, sorry.
That's okay. Did you come up with a solution?
So what do you want to do?
I'm very interested in serving on this committee, but it's my understanding that the other two committees that I volunteered for are not super-duper busy.
We didn't meet last year, or the year before.
Facilities.
I'd say we did.
I know the Facilities one's going to heat up, because there's a whole lot of construction and building things going on, but if the other two aren't super-crazy busy, then I really am interested in the School Start Time as well, as I have indicated in the past. But if you want to be on it, too, I think it would be great, because --
Willow, do you want to be on the committee? I mean, I'm just volunteering because I'm interested, but --
Yeah, I'll stay on it, I'll stay on it.
That's fine.
Jody, you can add me to the Audit Committee.
To what?
The Audit, since we have two.
Then Holly doesn't have to be on.
Oh, you don't have to if you don't want. I thought, I didn't realize what you made down, if you want me to do the Audit Committee.
Yeah, I'd be happy to have you do that.
It's fine, it's a fan favorite.
Christine is now on the Audit Committee. Are you being the Audit Committee?
Yeah, I'll say I would do the Audit Committee.
So, I'm just going to recap to make sure that everybody knows which committees that they have volunteered for. Audit Committee, I have Jonathan, Willow, and Christine. The BCTA Process Committee, Chris, Meredith, and Willow, and Wendy, sorry, two W's. The BCUEA, Chris and Wendy. Facilities, Jonathan, Christine, and Wendy. Policy, Meredith, myself, and Christine. And then School Start Time, Jonathan, Willow, and Wendy. Are you okay being on Facilities Audit and Policy?
Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure that --
My kids are older.
Okay.
Would you just, I just want to make sure I have this right, the BCU, I'm sorry, the BCUEA is, who, again?
Chris and Wendy.
Okay, thank you.
And I can be a third person on that, if we need a extra person. Okay, Item 7, Other Appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Designation Action Items 1 through 14.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 8, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Designation Action Items 1 through 3.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 9, authorizations, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Authorization Action Items 1 through 7.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 10, bonding of personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Appointment of Bonding of Personnel Action Items 1 through 3.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on, Wendy, I have a question.
Sure.
I'm assuming, I just want to clarify, District Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer, they're bonded for a million each?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 11, Annual Policy Approvals, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Policy Action Items 1 through 2.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 12, Approval of Minutes, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the June 19, 2019, regular Board meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Holly. Discussion first.
Any discussion, sorry, jumping ahead.
There, I don't have it with me, but I looked at it, and there were two items that were, it said either undisclosed, it was something, it looked like the Board had taken action, but it didn't specify what action the Board took.
Can we bring that up so that we can see it on the screen behind us?
I can't, I can hardly hear you.
When the Board meeting minutes are automated and pulled from what I'm doing on the back end, sometimes it says that there was no background information when we -- sometimes it says that there was no background information when we created those action items, so that "not specified" just carried over. I think it didn't know what we were asking of you, but below I did note what was, how it was motioned.
So this is like a ghost from...
Yeah, I should have deleted that. That just is normally omitted, but I didn't see it in my review.
Thank you. I just didn't know if something was missing or not. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Superintendent's Report.
Hi, just a couple things. As you know, we hired consultants, the school bus consultants, to come in. They came in in June, I think, May or June, met with everyone on the committee, a lot of staff members, and I had a call with them last week to go over some of their preliminary report. So they, basically, from all of our data, they were examining 14 different scenarios, which seemed like a lot, and I think they'll be providing a written report with seven or eight different options to bring back to the committee. And then they have a couple of recommendations that are two or three, I think, that they will prioritize, that they think kind of best meet the needs of all of the stakeholders that they met with during their time here. So their plan is to get a finalized report to the district and to meet with the committee in sometime in September after kind of school gets underway, to share some of those findings. They did find some areas that we could improve efficiency in, in transportation, based on routing and ridership and things such as that. So they would also be following up with our Transportation Department on making some of those changes as well. So that's kind of the update. I thought they had some interesting ideas and information. So I think they were a good group to hire to help with this.
So even if we didn't go to a change the start time, it sounds like the school would still benefit from the work that they did.
Absolutely.
And then the only other thing I wanted to include in the Superintendent's Report was some information about the tax rates, so I'm going to turn that over to Judy to share a little update.
So at the August 7th meeting, we'll be adopting, hopefully, the final tax rates because we obviously need to have that done in order to generate the tax bills and get them out to everybody by September 1st. There is a possibility, though, that the STAR data that comes to the taxing jurisdictions, the town of Bethlehem and the town of New Scotland, might not come out until that very first week in August. So depending on the timing of when that comes in to the towns, they can turn it around fairly quickly, within 24 hours to us. There's a slight possibility that the rates that I recommend that you adopt at that meeting on the 7th might change slightly based on these STAR changes. So if that happens, we'll either need to call a special meeting to reapprove the rates based on those changes, or we could have you approve it at the first meeting in September. But at that point, it would effectively be a retroactive approval of what has already gone out on the bills. So it really comes down to a preference of, you know, if we have to change it. And you can think about it. We don't need to decide this tonight, either. We can talk about it at the August 7th meeting as well. And at that point, I'll know whether they're final finals or not. I just wanted to mention it as a heads up, that we may be at the mercy of the state delivering that data to the towns.
Anything else?
No, sorry.
You're all done. Next up is the Board of Education Report. You go ahead. Go ahead, Jonathan.
I had the opportunity to attend the Lab School Banquet the night before graduation. They got done in record time. They had a good-sized graduating class, I think it was 21 or 22. And this year, the Coordinator, Dave Lindrum, spoke about each one of the students and talked about their attributes in the way that used to be done a number of years ago. And it really made for a very, very nice evening. In addition, I learned that this year's barbecue raised about $11,600. Once again, doing very well. And Molly Drew won the, earned, I should say, the top award in Lab School, which is the School Within Us Award.
The School what award?
School Within Us.
I was invited to the NISIT Capital Institute for Human Rights Teen Summer Symposium, which happened the 7th through the 9th, I believe, and I went on the 8th. It was, a group of political figures came and they did roundtables with 75 area students, and we discussed, I think it was a bill that they were going to propose. I don't know, I don't know if it was a fake bill or not, but I was to challenge it. And should we close school if it's 84 degrees? So it was interesting being a School Board member. We've had some conversation regarding the cooling temperatures in schools, so I gave the kids a little pushback on their thoughts. And so it was interesting. It was a great day, and it's a good event. And we, I think Bethlehem had four or five students that were present at the event. Mr. Warford was there, and I believe Mr. Riley coordinates it, but it was, it was a really nice event, so.
I was able to attend both the 8th grade moving up ceremony and the high school graduation. They were both very successful events. Student speakers, generally, for both events, I was very impressed. I thought they were both, both events were very well attended, and I cried through both of them, Holly, I was a mess. The other thing I wanted to mention was Ms. Mercucci and the Middle School Counselor being honored with the Capital Region Educator of the Year Award for the Gay Lesbian and Straight Education Network. They honor someone each year who makes a significant impact on the lives of LGBTQ students. I think as a district, we do a lot in terms of inclusivity. I think there's a way to go, especially with certain populations of students, that being one. I'm the mother of a first grader who gets teased every day for dressing like a girl to school, and I thought that that honor was pretty significant, and I wanted to mention it.
Just to go back to graduation, it was a nice event. The speakers were really well poised, well spoken. It was, they did a great job. They were tremendous speakers. And speaking on the topic, I was in the San Francisco Airport, and it was interesting because there was gay pride everywhere. There were T-shirts and sweatshirts, and it did make me realize a little bit like why we do a lot. We can still, there's still opportunity to do more. So just wanted to bring that up as I was there.
Anyone else? And in terms of committee reports, the Facilities Committee met just before the meeting tonight. And I don't know if you want to say anything, Jonathan, about the committee meeting?
It was interesting. There are a lot of changes that you normally find in the, in this kind of large bill. The, I think what I found most fascinating was how up, I'm sorry, was, who was the gentleman with Greg?
Nick.
Nick?
Nick.
Nick. That Nick really had a good handle on. When I asked questions, he really had good answers, and I was pleased with the detail that we were getting. So right now, I feel comfortable. If that changes, I'll let you know. But no, I think we're in a good place.
And we were able to see some photographs of the work so far, what's happening, and they're making progress.
I will say, I drove by Elsmere today, and there are a lot of big diggers doing a lot of really fun work. So if there are any kids who are into machinery, they should definitely come by Elsmere and see what they're doing. Seems like it's going to be a great parking lot because there's a lot going on.
Just stay away from the machines.
Yes, just look from a distance.
Yes.
Item 15, Recognition of Visitors on an Agenda Item. Item 16, Action Items, Part A, Finance Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Finance Action Items 1 through 15.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I was looking at the third one, the Facility Use Fee Schedule, and I was just curious, because I noticed there were four different tiers of payment. Our Tier Four, is that comparable to other districts? So I was just curious, because if you look at the rates, like if they're, the lower for people in district, which obviously makes sense, but then out of district, they get significantly higher. And I only ask just because a way that we can make a decent amount of money is by using these facilities.
Our facilities are so busy that a Tier Four group actually getting access to the building
is unlikely.
is highly unlikely.
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. B, Professional Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Professional Personnel Action Items 1 through 18.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Sure. Motion carries, and our new language supervisor is in the audience. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself to everybody?
We have a mic right there for you.
Thank you very much. It is not just an honor to be part of your community, but it is very exciting. I look forward to putting my 10 cents in and seeing what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. C, Support Personnel Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Support Staff Action Items 1 through 10.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. D, Other Action Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Action Items 1 through 7.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 17, Recognition of Visitors on a Non-Agenda Item.
Anybody?
Future Meetings, Wednesday, August 7th, at 5:00 PM, is the currently scheduled next Facilities Committee meeting. And with the Board meeting to follow, with a 6:00 anticipated executive session, the public meeting at 7:00. And then the following Board meeting on Wednesday, September 4th, 6:00 anticipated executive session, and a 7:00 regular Board meeting. There's no further business? Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.